Start with the belligerent, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll call, please, Mrs. Giubrino?
Yes, Mrs. Neiger?
Here.
Mrs. Gillis?
Here.
Mr. Engel?
Here.
Mr. Agabozzi?
Here.
Mr. Zappano?
Here.
Do I have a recommendation to approve the agenda as presented, including any amendments?
Hold on a second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Agabozzi?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Zappano?
Aye.
Mrs. Neiger?
Aye.
Did you hear what we're doing?
Yes, we're gonna start with Casey Wopra, our director. Thanks, everybody. How are you guys?
Good.
Thanks for having us tonight. We ran a couple of teams in here. First, we're being boys ball up in. Apologize, I was trying to... Couple of teams we're bringing in tonight to recognize, you know, first of all, we're glad we had a fall season. There was a lot of uncertainty back in July as to how things were gonna play out. You know, we're all hopeful there's gonna be a golf season based upon the fact that golf has been played since March. But we're glad everybody got to play, and these guys had a great season. Here with me today, I'm gonna introduce the, we have eight golfers here. The starting six from our SWC tournament championship team. Brent Baumgartner, cheers your hand. Austin Bray. Landon Bray. Nathan Harmic. Joey Kramer. And Ryan Yoder. And then also in addition to the starting six, we have two seniors, Logan Janik and Andrew Phillips are here with us tonight. So let me start off with Academic All Ohio. We have four seniors on the team. All four were named Academic All Ohio. You know, you're named Academic All Ohio as long as you have above 3.25 GPA on a 4.0s unweighted scale. So our four seniors, Brent Baumgartner, Nathan Harmic, Logan Janik, and Andrew Phillips. Please join Coach Gillman and me in congratulating these four seniors on this honor. And then for the season, you know, golf, high school golf has kinda changed over the years and, you know, tournaments have kinda come to the big thing that everybody does. We played in nine tournaments this year. In those nine tournaments, we had two first-place finishes, four runner-up finishes, and three third-place finishes. So in the regular season, we never finished below a third place in any of the tournaments we played in. We shot some fantastic scores. I think at Valeria, we shot like 305 or 306, which we believe was a school record, which was eventually broken, and I'll get to that. We finished second place. There was some really good golf being played out there this year. So, you know, we had opportunities to finish higher. Over in Gorwalk, we shot 312, which traditionally will win that thing by five or six shots every year, and finished second there too. So these guys have had a tremendous season. Our regular season, you know, we started and ended with championships. We won at Humboldt Lakes to start the year. And then at the conference, as I referenced earlier, at the conference tournament, right before the postseason started, these guys went out and shot 301, which we're calling a school record. We believe that is a school record. That's a fantastic score based upon everything we can find. So, you know, congratulations to, again, to the starting six, Brent Baumgartner, Austin Bray, Landon Bray, Nathan Harmic, Joey Kramer, and Ryan Yoder. Lastly, I'd like to congratulate our golfers. We had some individual awards this year as well. Brent and Nathan were both named honorable mention All Southwestern Conference. Austin Bray was named second-team All Southwestern Conference. Ryan Yoder was named first-team All Southwestern Conference and second-team All District. Ryan was also a district qualifier for us this year. Represented us really well over at Pine Hills and looking forward to the future with Ryan and all these guys. So again, please join me in congratulating these eight boys golfers.
Thank you, guys.
I think so, yeah.
So the next group coming in, as you can see, they all have shirts on. When you win a championship here, right with your glasses, you're always wearing.
Right. It's not a party, it works out perfect.
And the letters all represent where they, I believe, where they finished in the race. So I mean, it turns out for us in the race, so.
Who expects nothing but some nice glasses?
So joining us here with Coach Blatz and Coach Watts, we have Luke Bowlesby, Caleb Cabrera, Isaac Davis, Sebastian Pacora, Ty Perez, Jacob Raisler, Cale Walker. These seven boys had a tremendous season this past fall. And that carried over into the championship season, which for us starts with the Southwestern Conference. At the Southwestern Conference meet, which is, that's how the championship is determined, our scoring five runners finished first, fifth, sixth, eighth, and 11th, who scored 31 points. For the first time since 2004, and the fifth time in school history, the young men won a conference championship for Amherst. So please congratulate them on that. To put that scoring in perspective, we scored 31 points, and the next closest team scored 63. So that's a tremendous acknowledgement to these guys. Fortunately for VoiceScout Country, the season did not end at SWCs. The next week, they ran back again at Lorain County Community College, which is where the SWC meet was held next. Actually, we ran a lot of repeats this year. So it was the OHSA district race. As a team, they finished second in their part of the race. And then these seven young men had an opportunity to run a board, and then the following week at regionals. That Saturday at regionals, they finished 12th out of 24 teams. While that wasn't good enough for them to qualify on as a team to the state meet, we did have two young men who qualified to the state meet. Ty Perez and Luke Bowlesby, both were our state qualifiers. Ty finished 15th at regionals, and Luke, top 32 individuals made it to state, Luke was right there at 32. So and then those two young men went down to Columbus on a new course, represented Amherst very well. Ty finished 58th out of 177 runners, and Luke finished 74th. I guess more remarkable than that is there were only two freshmen who were individual qualifiers from across the state, these two young men. On top of that, there were obviously multiple freshmen who were in the race based upon the way teams qualified. These guys finished second, third amongst the freshmen that had qualified in the state meet. So congratulations to these guys on a great season. Again, we literally got to recognize these guys. First, Coach Blatz, I know he doesn't want the recognition, but he was named Southwestern Conference Coach of the Year. I think that's obviously...
You gotta give Eric the Assistant Coach of the Year, though.
He was definitely Assistant Coach of the Year. Isaac Davis was named honorable mention All Southwestern Conference. Sebastian Pacora was honorable mention All Southwestern Conference and honorable mention All Lorain County. Caleb Cabrera was second-team All Southwestern Conference and second-team All Lorain County. Cale Walker, I'm sorry, Jacob Raisler, first-team All Southwestern Conference, second-team All Lorain County. Cale Walker was first-team All Southwestern Conference and first-team All Lorain County. Luke Bowlesby was a state qualifier, first-team All Southwestern Conference and first-team All Lorain County. Ty Perez, OHSA state qualifier, Southwestern Conference MVP, Lorain County Division One Runner of the Year, first-team All Southwestern Conference, first-team All Lorain County. And he's the first freshman to win the Southwestern Conference championship. He is also the first freshman to win the OHSA district championship. So again, tremendous season for these young men, and thanks so much for having us here tonight.
Thank you, thank you very much for coming.
Thanks for having us. Congratulations, great job, guys. I'm good for tonight. Oh, I do, sorry. I would like to, I think it was brought up at another board meeting, but I'd like to publicly thank Slime. For those of you guys who don't, Slime has the Jeep Jam every year. This year, obviously with COVID, it was not possible. But I think it needs to be noted again that the Slime family did step up. Honored their commitments to our students and student athletes, our athletic programmers, and our academic programs by donating to our booster clubs, et cetera. Just wanted to publicly thank them for their continued support. Lastly, I'd also like to thank the Booster Club. We are getting new championship banners for the gym. I want to thank them for their support of everything we have going on, and I'm not done. Sorry, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Gibson, you're up.
All right.
Are you gonna try to feel like...
See, I'm one week late. I love it. How do you like it?
That's what I, we'll see what you have to say.
I know, it's gonna start off right. Do you have any videos tonight?
No videos. Actually, I have a, we have our first group that we're gonna talk about on Zoom. I don't know why the TV went off. I'm trying to fix that for you really fast. It should be it. All right. So through some connections we have made, we had the opportunity to work with a group called High Schools That Work. And we have a program called Making Middle Grade Work. So High School That Works is a part of an organization that funds schools around the country. Specifically, the group that we work with, and you see Diana and Kristen and Amanda, who've been awesome in helping us, and we talked about last week, really pushing our pedagogy and becoming better, and just as a building. They are the, make up the Northeast Ohio District of the High Schools That Work program. And they have been funded by the state for 21 years. So it's pretty awesome. So they help with funding, they do, they've put us in connection with like Kent McKinley Middle School. So we're working on a PBIS program to kinda work with them to help improve our program so we don't have to face some of the hurdles that schools that initially rolled that out have to face. Different things like that. So they make connections, they help bring in new ideas. And it's just another voice who's really in the field, and all former educators that do some amazing work. So they wanted to, part of our figure of this that they will present at the board meeting. So we're gonna try to do this with Diane. I think Diane's gonna talk. Diane, go ahead and try to talk. All right, hold on, hold on one second, because now the audio is running through the TV. Yeah, sometimes it's too fancy, though, right? Because we just had this working. Diane, can you try it again? No, it's still not working. All right, I'm just gonna do this. I'm gonna take it out of there. All right.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right, good evening. It's a pleasure to be here with you, even virtually. And with me tonight, I have Amanda Corkwright and Kristen Rowland, who's a part of our team. And it's our pleasure to be here tonight with you to welcome Amherst Junior High as the newest, one of our newest Making Middle Grades Work sites. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Andrew for having us be a part of his team. We work with his team. We're looking forward to working with his team and to see great things. There are many doing great things, and we always look at how can we go from good to great. So again, I wanna thank you for allowing us to present a new site banner. So Andrew, hopefully you have your banner and having it hung up into the school. And the banner says, "To build a culture of high expectations." We're always challenging our schools to create a culture of high expectations for all. That means all staff, all students, all stakeholders. So that's where the challenge is, and there's always a place to go from good to great. So tonight, Amherst Junior High joins 31 high schools of work sites and 21 Making Middle Grades Work sites in Northeast Ohio. And the state of Ohio, we have 270 sites. And these sites join voluntarily, and the only thing we're about, the only thing that we work on is increasing student achievement and graduate graduation rates. That's it. And we work with all the different partners that work with schools, and we work on a one plan. We've been, I know the state of Ohio is going to a one-plan approach with school improvement, but we've been working on that for a long time. We believe that we join you, tonight you join, you know, the junior high joins us as Making Middle Grades Work site. But we wanna join you as one of your partners for school improvement, working together to make change happen. And just let you know that we're part of the Southern Region Education Board out of Atlanta, which is the home of High Schools That Work and now Making Schools Work. And since we've joined in the year 2000, as Andrew said, we've been going at this for over 20 years. Ohio has been recognized nationally, 228 national recognitions. The state of Ohio was recognized among all the states last year as one of the most high-performing sites and states with High Schools That Work and Making Middle Grades Work. So we're just excited that Amherst is joining each year as a member of Making Middle Grades Work. They'll receive an annual grant of funding. They also receive free coaching, free professional development, and we do a lot of other kinds of grants too to support schools. So they'll be receiving all those things at no additional cost. So we're just proud to have you as a part of this, and I'll let Amanda and Kristen say a few words if they like. So congratulations.
I would just like to say real quickly, Andrew, we've enjoyed working with you already up to this point. We're very excited to have you as part of our team, and I think we're gonna see big things happen. Thank you.
All right, all right. Thanks, Amanda. The check is in the mail. The check is in the mail. I appreciate that. Diana, Kristen, thank you guys so much. It's good to see you. Thanks for all you guys do.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Night.
Good night. So yeah, like the grand links you spoke about, so we received $3,000 this year. And that's just $3,000 that we can offset through professional development, purchase of things, even paying for subs and stuff like that for our teachers to go explore new ideas, try new things out, for us to meet as a group. They come up every time we meet. You know, and that's just money that we can use that we don't have to use from the district that kinda lightens our load a little bit district-wide. So I think anytime you can get access to funding like that, and especially from a group that has been funded for 21 straight years. So we know that's pretty consistent, and we can, we feel like our partnership moving forward, we can kinda count on them to be there for us. You know, we think that's really important. So we're really excited about that. The second group we have, you guys, come on ahead. The second group we have, we're really excited about, too, probably more excited about, this is Mr. Perdue. He is a bus driver in the district. He is also one of our study hall monitors, lunchroom monitors. And probably more importantly, he is maybe the deepest thinker we have on staff. Some of the emails and conversations that Mr. Perdue and I get into, and Mr. Venazzo at Norton can tell you too, because they have some conversations. But he is so well thought out, and he is so kid-centered, that it's amazing that we're so lucky to have him, you know, in the various roles that we have him. You know, whether it be on the bus, and he's the first person that our parents see, or that the young people see before they come to school, or whether it's in the lunchroom or in study halls here. And he's constantly advocating for students. And, you know, he did this last year when he started this, once a week after school or hangout, where kids came in and we used the TVs here, and they just played video games, and it was just so much fun. And he came to me earlier this year, and he's like, "I just wanna find something for kids. I wanna find something that kids wanna do, maybe kids who don't fit into athletics, or music, or arts, or something like that." And maybe they do, maybe there's some overlap, he goes, "But I just wanna have another outlet for kids to get together and just love the experience of being at the junior high." So he came to me with this esports idea. So Mr. Perdue, if you wanna say a couple of words, you can. If not, if you wanna introduce who you brought with you and just have them talk to you, that's totally good, too.
Sure. Mr. Gibson, thank you, and thank you all for having us tonight. Like Mr. Gibson said, for two years now, we've been doing gaming slash esports here at the junior high. And a lot of it is because I sat down in the lunchroom one day with a group of students and trying to bond a little bit. And Owen Perna suggested, "Why don't we do a gaming club like they have at the high school?" So I came to Mr. Gibson, and between Mr. Gibson and all the leaders in the district, I'm very thankful because we're very forward-thinking and open-minded, and they allowed us, like you said, to come in. And I was so worried that no one was gonna do it. It was just gonna be myself and Owen. And we had almost 50 students come in at one time last year. And this year, I was really worried because of COVID, and we wanted to make sure that we were social distancing and everything like that. But again, because of Owen's optimism, we pushed forward, and we have 30 members of the club this year. We're part of a league that has over 30 states in it. There's 3,000 members and a little over 100 teams. So I wanted each one of the members to introduce themselves. Like I said, Owen, he's an eighth grader. He really got this started last year. I just tried to keep it together, but go ahead, Owen.
My name is Owen Perna, and I was really excited when, you know, because I think I was kind of joking a little bit when I said gaming club. But then it actually happened, and I was really, really excited because I was really jealous of the high school because they had this cool thing, and video games are what I really like, you know, best. So when I heard that it was happening, I really wanted to, you know, get it started, you know, my friend. And it happened, and it was more than we thought it would be. And now we're here today with esports, and we're playing with a bunch of other states and competitively as well for prizes and stuff. And it's crazy because really, it all just started when me and my friend were just talking at our table, and Mr. Perdue just walked over and sat down. And now we're here.
So then Garrett Botts, a seventh grader, you came in last year, right?
I said, "Gaming"?
Yeah.
No, I said, "Gaming," or yeah.
Yeah, so this is his second year. Unfortunately, I was hoping to say he was undefeated, but he's doing really good this year in Smash Brothers. And more importantly, in my absence, even as a seventh grader, he steps up a lot and helps the other members of the club and keeps people calm, right, when things get a little disorderly. So he's really stepped up as a leader as a seventh grader. So Garrett, come too.
Yeah, I'm Garrett Bott. I play Smash Bros.
Why don't you step up some, yeah?
I play Smash Brothers, and I'm thankful for the gaming club because I get to meet new people who have similar interests. And I'm sure other kids are thankful for the same reason. Teaches us about like time management. That wasn't the word. Because if we don't show up for a match, if we're on a team sport like Mario Kart, maybe, then it's victory. Our teammates can't play if we don't show up, or the same with Rock League. But I play Smash Bros., it's just me. But if I don't show up, it's a loss. So and obviously, I want to lose, I don't, anyway, you know. And yeah, I've been wanting to do esports and competitive gaming for a long time, so I'm just really thankful for the opportunity.
And then when we were getting it together this year, Mr. Gibson and I kinda flipped back and forth on sixth graders. Because traditionally, it's seventh and eighth grade that pretty much do sports in clubs in the junior high. And because I was worried no one was gonna do it, I really pushed harder, and Mr. Gibson said, "Okay." And Zane is a great example of why, you know, really it's good to have the sixth graders involved. Not only are they talented, but again, they already are starting to possess that maturity, and they're growing, you know, through interactions with the other teams. So, you know, for the sixth graders to have that chance to just build character with their peers, it's awesome. But go ahead, Zane.
Hello. My name is Zane Rose. I'm a sixth grader in the AGH Esports. The reason why I wanted to join it was because, just like Garrett, I wanted to like connect with people that had the same interests as me. One thing that I really like about esports is that we can all like, like get around and like, just like connect with each other. I don't really know how to explain it. You can just like, like you have all these friends, you can like dance to like different groups. You can just like play, it's like super fun.
That's good, Zane, yeah. Well, again, thank you very much. I hope you understand through the student class how much this means to them and the other students that are involved. We had a seventh grader show up. He'd never been a part of anything other than school, family, and maybe church or something. He'd never been on a team, no VoiceScout team like that. So just for them to have that opportunity, we're really thankful, and hope that it can continue over the next couple of years. So, thanks.
Like, that's a perfect example of, you know, why we're so lucky to be here and be so supported by you guys and by Sarah. And Amy, and my team. The same kind of idea would be a secret that we had two years ago, not two years ago now. Just trying to find something for kids to connect to. What's one thing that kids can connect to? And if we can do that, we're gonna be okay. So, and I'm telling you, Mr. Perdue is, I'm one of the best advocates for students that I've ever met in my all-major competition. Like, it's just, he's online with these kids four nights a week. He won't tell you that because they have to have somebody online with them and it all. Their chats are monitored. They've only lost three games this whole year, and none of the kids have participated in this league before this year. They're amazing, and they've been doing it all remotely. Like, a lot of schools typically would get together, like we, for example, would get together, but because of COVID and things like that, it's been, I just, we've been doing it remotely. And I really think that value came from Garrett. We talked about the first week, a couple of kids didn't show up to their match, and the whole team lost. And that was a real reality check for some of these kids that had never had to work as part of the team, you know? Even in the gamer world, you can be really individualized. But as a part of this league, you have to be a part of the team. So they're learning real-world values, you know, right in here.
When they're competitively gaming around the country, whether that is a calm experience, or these guys getting pretty crazy in their...
It's excitable. They get excitable. Yeah, but everything's recorded. So, and they do have, we have not had any students that have been warned or suspended from play by the league, but the league does have rules about things that are set on the microphones or in chat, and they go back, and they take that very seriously. When Chris and I talk to the guy who ran the league, that was his number-one thing. He's like, "We're not gonna have kids on here that use abusive language, or that are inappropriate in any manner, that don't show good sportsmanship." You know, but it's like anything else, you know? They're playing Mario Kart 3, 4, or Frost, and they're screaming on the mic at the other one, "You gotta go, you gotta go, you gotta go." So it's really cool. But, and also, like I said, the support is super huge. Amy and Steve were super helpful with us because we kinda put this together in three weeks and just trying to like work through the logistics and making it work. Because Chris gave me, he's like, "I got this idea, but it starts, well, it's like September 10th or October 10th." And I'm like, "Chris, it's October 2nd." So, but really appreciate the time tonight. Appreciate you guys having us. Thank you for all your support and everything you guys do. Thank you.
I would say that you, you did a good job.
Thank you.
You're up there.
I'll have a video next time.
I know your kids were pretty good, Amy. They're competing with you.
Was it these kids?
They did a great job.
I know, I know. I'm telling you, it's second half for these guys. They love it. So, and again, like those group of kids, not a lot of kids that get recognized through athletics or anything like that, so it's nice for them to be recognized for this.
Thank you again.
Thanks, guys.
Do we have anybody prepared for the public?
Sure.
No one. Okay. All right, well, we're gonna move on then with the treasurer's report. Mrs. Giubrino?
Good evening, all of us and everybody in attendance. I'm going to present the five-year forecast this evening. You all have a green folder in front of you. Included in it is, you have contents, pledge and response, eight pages of assumptions, two views of the forecast, and multiple exhibits. This is all-inclusive and will be sent down to the state as the assumptions. They're due November 30th, along with the five-year forecast. I'm not going to be showing you a picture of the forecast on the slide presentation. So if you want to go to the last tab of exhibits, actually, the second view of the forecast is gonna be easier for you all to read. And that is like the landscape view, and it's two pages. This is a lengthy presentation. If anybody wants a copy of it, I can send you a PowerPoint. We're not going to cut out all of the slides this evening. I found... I promise you. Um, but it is, uh, like a Cliff's Notes of what's in the assumptions. Uh, so let's get started. Um, you all are aware, the basis of the report is founded on higher state code. It's submitted to the Department of Education in November and an update in May. It's for the general fund only. It includes three prior years, the current year and four future years. And, um, the youth, the assumptions are used in, in predicting, but this is also a tool for the Department of Education and the state office to identify districts that might be in jeopardy. So it's a roadmap to the district's financial future. It's for planning, um, it's planning for change, planning for consistency, shows the district's revenue and expenditures. Obstacles on our journeys, on our journey would be, uh, base, first and foremost expenditures, L P C revenue. Um, and then uncertainty, which you always have in forecasts, the further out the forecast extends, the less accurate you're wanting to find it to be. That's just the nature of, of, uh, being somebody who needs a crystal ball, right? When we do our forecast. Uh, so we're, we're uncertain about changes in the industry and we're uncertain about changes in legislation. Um, in smaller county, we have two more states by annual budgets. Every forecast has three budgets, state budgets in it. And we have no idea what's going to happen in the very next one unless it's already been released. Typically the bank of the budget, the first iteration isn't released until February, March, right, Steve? And then it's really not finalized typically until May, June. So we'll have done a forecast update before we even know what the next annual budget might mean to the district. So the slides about revenues really is, is showing you about consistency. So fiscal twenty is the year we just completed. Total revenue were thirty-eight million, two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. Um, for instance, our general property tax line one zero one in fiscal twenty was forty-four point two four percent of the total revenue. It will be out to fiscal twenty-five, which is the last year of the five-year forecast. We're expecting it to be forty-four point eight three percent. Very, very close. Major revenue sources for fiscal twenty, the year just completed, excuse me, this is fiscal twenty-one. So this is what we have forecasted for this year. Our real estate, which includes our general property, which is line one, line two is public utility, tangible. And then the state aid, which represents home services and the rolac. Um, if you add those together, it's ninety-two point nine five percent of the revenue. So that doesn't leave a whole lot of room for any help. So our total real estate, our total global is fifty-four point nine seven. Our total state is almost thirty-eight. If you look at just line one, it's forty-five percent of our revenue. This is a graph of our three most recent years, eighteen, nineteen and twenty and all of the forecasted periods. These two outliers in fiscal twenty-four and twenty-five represent where we need re-rules. I'm not going to go through, um, a lot of these in great detail. This was a slide that was in the main forecast presentation, um, where we identified key real estate, real estate tax assumptions. We expected there to be about five percent of delinquency. Um, that hasn't come to fruition. Uh, we're, as far as we know, collecting near one hundred percent. Um, and technically, one can assume that even if there are delinquencies currently, you will eventually collect one hundred percent of what's owed to us. Um, new construction, we thought we needed to expect a decrease, um, that isn't happening. Um, trying to update in, um, twenty-one, we said zero growth and assessment evaluation through the auditors. I don't think that that is going to happen. And the reappraisal in twenty-twenty-four, I don't think that that will mean anything but, um, static or positive. So I don't think that there's any negative outlook there. Cuts in revenue from the state, we are aware that there was seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars in cuts last year, fiscal twenty. We were anticipating to receive about the same this year. This is just a snapshot view of the current foundations on my report saying that our total aid is fourteen million, five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. That does include over two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars in the state wellness, um, student wellness, um, and success revenue. And then, um, our fiscal twenty and twenty-one state revenue was supposed to be based upon the final numbers from fiscal nineteen. So this just shows that our total revenue projected from the state was all the additional aid out of, was about fourteen point nine one thousand. This is our foundation line. Um, we're expecting very static, um, foundation revenues. We are on the guarantee. Um, basic A, our major assumption, um, is that there's a new annual budget. So what do we forecast? We don't know to forecast very optimistically and we don't know to forecast in a pessimistic manner. So being on the guarantee and we've been on the guarantee for a long time, there's no sense in changing our assumption that we will have relatively static foundation Our expenditures two remain rather constant and percent to the total. This is a view of fiscal twenty compared to the last year of the forecast fiscal twenty-five. In fiscal twenty-one, we are forecasted to spend thirty-nine million dollars total. Fifty-five percent is salaries, twenty-two, excuse me, twenty point seven seven is, um, fringe benefits. Add purchase services in there and those three categories, um, comprise ninety-one plus percent of our fiscal budget. Salaries and fringe, this is a nice look at what has happened, um, between fiscal, um, two thousand and fifteen and our final projected year of fiscal two thousand and forty-five. Switch to total revenue expenditures. Um, in fiscal twenty, the year we just finished, we received thirty-eight million, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in revenue. We spent thirty-eight million, three hundred and seventy-seven. We had a deficit spend of ninety-six thousand dollars. Our cash reserves are sixteen hundred and five for the year. We have the same thing for fiscal one one and twenty-five. Here we show thirty-eight million dollars, thirty-eight point four million dollars in total revenue. That's excluding the real estate renewal. And our expenditures, um, we see increasing to forty-three point one million. Deficit spend seventy-four million. Our reserves then go to negative eight point five million. That includes seven and a half million minus one million in the convergence of candidate year give us that amount. And again, I'm just going to, I'm not chicken little. I'm not going to say the sky is falling. So it's the way the forecast mechanics work. As you have increasing expenditures and static revenues, there's going to be a break-even point and then there's going to be a point at which you have to play with your reserves. This is forecast. We have never ended up that way. Correct, Mr. Sayers?
That's correct.
So we won't belabor that too very long. Another graph showing our trend. Want to make a point about the consistency in the district. We have sound improvement in annual practices. Um, you'll see this, you'll see this slide in some manner in every forecast that we do. These practices have built a healthy financial condition. What that tells us is that we need to keep looking at proven ways to remain financially stable past the year twenty-twenty-three. Um, the next valid issue is a renewal of the two thousand and twelve operating rate. Our focus, um, we will consistently, uh, continue to monitor, um, district expenditures. Our goal though is to hopefully approach this with minimal, minimal impact to the highly, high quality educational environment that we have here in Amherst. Um, well, over here on the left, you'll hear, I say this a lot, it's something that we can write about in Amherst, that we consistently perform in the top twenty percent of the state, yet we are in the lowest part of the lowest twenty percent of the state in expenditures for people. Our mission and thank you. So, um, the forecast, um, does anybody have any questions about it? And try not to put too many numbers or spreadsheets on the screen because they're difficult to read and interpret, uh, context.
Not necessarily a question, if I remember correctly, if I'm wrong. We, we once said that we would go to two thousand and eighteen before we had to come back from eleven. And through prudent, watchful eyes of the budget, we're now two thousand and twenty-three. So I think that's, that's a lot. And looking at the numbers, like salaries and benefits and revenue, that percentage is the one that always sticks in my mind. That's gonna be a point where it's gonna be unacceptable. Let's reduce something perhaps in two thousand and twenty-three for the season two thousand and twenty-four, hopefully. That's, that's my thought often when I see these numbers, right?
Yeah, that, that's a great point. If, if I could, it just, uh, to, to your point, Ron, I was just actually looking at the numbers, you know, I'm looking at the, uh, graph correctly. For two thousand and twenty, our salary and benefits were about seventy-four, seventy-five percent of our expenditures, which is very, very good. Uh, you wouldn't be below eighty. Some districts are up between eighty and eighty-five. And so that's a goal of ours to, to keep those in that, in that seventy-five range. So that's a good thing, uh, as we look to the, uh, future. A couple of things, we, we are able to say, and even with the reductions in state funding last year, even with the reductions in state funding this year, we still can say that we are financially stable through at least two thousand and twenty-three, uh, which is a good thing. At this point, we can't make any projections beyond that really for a couple of reasons. First of all, we have two reliable bodies, uh, one of which will need to be renewed by the end of two thousand and twenty-two. The other one will need to be renewed by the end of two thousand and twenty-three. And as Amy mentioned, the uncertainty of the next state budget. And, uh, in our, in our case, we're, is it right around forty percent of our revenue? Uh, it, it comes from state sources. So it's a significant portion of our revenue, which makes it very difficult to forecast uh, when we're uncertain in terms of what the next state budget, uh, uh, you know, will, will mean, you know, specifically for our district. So, uh, we are in a good position. Uh, obviously this year, as we've talked before, is a struggle financially because of the situation we're in. You have a combination of reduced revenues from the state and increased expenses, more than obviously what we projected with staffing for distancing and, uh, the transportation things, supplies and all those kinds of things. So, you know, as we start to plan for next year and beyond, you know, there will have to be some rightsizing, uh, that takes place in order to keep us on track financially. But, uh, we're in a good position, you know, as we've said before, we can weather the storm that we kind of find ourselves in. Uh, and, uh, you know, big thing is waiting to see what that next state budget looks like. And then once we have that information, hopefully by the end of June, uh, we'll be able to better project, uh, you know, long-term. Because again, as Amy says, the further you go out, it just, there's so many uncertainties. Actually, there's two more state budgets. Like in this, in this forecast. Uh, so again, uh, thank you, Amy. You've done a great, great job with this and a lot goes into these five-year forecasts.
And just another mention, nothing's saying that we can only do two forecasts a year in November and an update in May. We can change the forecast whenever we find out more knowledge about the events happening in our district. So we, we can do this every month, every, every month.
It's a work in progress.
I, I'm simply saying, as we learn more, we, we can, we can update that forecast at eight point, so we don't just have to do it two times a year. Um, Steve and I have frequent conversations, we all do, um, have frequent conversations about the state of the schools and what we can do to financially better ourselves. And, uh, so, does anybody have any other questions?
Just a trick is don't become complacent. Keep your eye on that ball and, and more importantly, as you, as we find out where we are as things change, critical is critical to provide the information to us as well as the public. Here's where we are because we just, you know, nobody likes surprises. We had a couple of years ago and I don't want to go through that again, so. But this is, none of this is a surprise. This is, we've been talking about this for a long time and we know that this is not a surprise to me anyway.
So that's all I have for my presentation this evening.
Well done.
Thank you. Very good job. Do you want to go through your other recommendations then? Yes, I would like to and I'm president. This evening, um, item eight A, from three minutes from the October twelfth regular meeting. Item B, our treasurer's financials for the month of October two thousand and twenty. Um, and item C, I wanted to take a moment to explain item C. This is something that you see frequently, but you've never heard me ask for a verbal, um, revision to this item. So we have two items this month, um, that you saw on your agenda before. Fund five ninety-nine special cost center nineteen twenty-one represents the one hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars in federal sub-revenue grants here receiving from the city of Amherst. So this is establishing the fund and establishing the, the appropriation for us to purchase two new buses. The next item, uh, fund three hundred and ninety twenty-one special cost center is a fund for five thousand dollars, um, initial appropriation for the Comets Live Video Technology Program, which is what you saw Mr. Cottrell present last week along with, um, Mr. Smith. Um, so this is just an initial, um, appropriation of five thousand dollars. Um, there won't be a lot of financial activity in it, uh, we anticipate this year, but starting next fiscal year, we, we can see a ramp up certainly. Uh, what I'm going to add is, um, fund ninety-nine, um, four ninety-nine, excuse me, and I believe it's special cost center nineteen twenty-one. I can clarify that for you via email if you wish. Last month, the board approved an appropriation of twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars. This month, we're asking you to increase it to six thousand, an additional six thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars to a total of twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven. This is what is referred to as the OCCRRA. Mrs. Walker can tell you what that acronym stands for. It is preschool, preschool, reimbursement. There you go. Um, and we just found out at four-thirty this afternoon that, um, we didn't even apply for, the state gave us an additional sixty-three hundred and seventy-five dollars, um, to reverse us for preschool education expenses. So again, so our senator asked you to do that verbally, but we will, um, we will alter the agenda and that will be reflected in the minutes. Item D then is the five-year forecast that we just spoke about. Item E is the receipt of the following donations. I have nothing further than those five items. I have a motion to the treasurer's report, eight A through eight E. Discussion, question? I, I just want to make a comment and I just want to take the city of Amherst for the two new school buses. That is phenomenal. Thank you.
The, uh, Comets Live Video Technology Program. I'm assuming because of the, the timing of the year, they wanted initially twenty-five thousand to do, to buy equipment and do some things to get her, get her ramped up. When is that twenty-five grand, if we're gonna go that long, coming to play?
It doesn't right now. Um, what this is, is setting up a three hundred fund, which is a district managed student activity organization, um, different than a, a two hundred fund, which is a student managed, um, fund. This is a district managed fund like our esports, like our athletics funds. This is, um, set up a three hundred fund that's going to be self-sustaining. So there's not going to be any transfer from general fund over to this three hundred fund. This is monies that can be donations, um, donations.
We're getting a start for them to give donations now that start popping into this fund.
We're not starting, we're not starting anything.
To raise a grant brand new, you know?
To raise a grant revenue, you know, could, but it allows us to have a place to deposit revenue as it comes in, but it would not come from the general fund. But it allows us to get started with the program, raising the voting program, yeah, making, you know, folks aware.
This first year of donation revenue.
I guess I feel the question, I feel the board based on the presentation we had. Do we have, do we have an expectation of giving them more money to get it started?
I don't understand.
I don't understand.
I don't, I don't think that it was ever predestined in a way that we were going to transfer monies from the general fund over to this fund.
Well, I would do it, but we have to do that.
I think, I think we, I was under the impression that when they needed this dollar, once they had defined the equipment and had a price tag to that equipment, we would have a recommendation from administration to move forward to do that. But, but I don't think there needs to be any dollars put into this fund now, is my understanding. I could be correct.
It would be my recommendation that we hold off until at least next summer. Again, going back to, you know, when we have a better idea of, you know, what the state budget looks like, where we're at financially. In the meantime, you know, we will have the fund established, and there are a couple of grants that we're in the process, excuse me, of exploring that may produce some revenue. We may get, you know, potential sponsorships, potential donations. And so, I think if we kind of pursue some of those things, see where we're at next July, and then certainly we can come back and revisit and get an idea of where we're at and what our needs are at that time.
You, you'll communicate what we're thinking to Doug at some points.
Sure, absolutely.
I think, I think in the last meeting, you asked a question, and we kind of gave them guidelines as a board to go ahead and move forward and start doing presentations and ask for money.
And now the money has a place to go. I mean, if there's $3,000, the money has a home.
All right, just so long as they understand.
Yep.
Okay, any more discussion on the treasurer's recommendations? Go, please.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mr. Yakobozzi?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Moving on to superintendent's report, Mr. Sayers.
Thank you, Mrs. Snyder. Just three things here this evening. We covered a lot of ground last week in our work session as we reviewed where we're at and our tools. But just three things here real quick. First, I, I too, on behalf of our students, our staff, Mrs. Gillis, as you've mentioned, a big thank you to Mayor Mark Costello, the city of Amherst for generously donating over $122,000 of the City Cares Act revenue, and so that we can purchase new two, two new school buses. Just a tremendous gesture on, on behalf of the mayor of the city. So, again, a big thank you, and I know a big thank you from our transportation department is certainly very, very helpful. The other two things, that's just a quick mention here. We do have another round or another batch of updated policies as recommended by EOLA. So, I will be emailing in the very near future, Mr. Yakobozzi, Mrs. Snyder, some policies for you to review. And our hope is to have those on our December board agenda for consideration by the entire board. And then the last thing I want to share, just a quick enrollment update. You know, we're to the point in time of the year now where kind of the dust has settled. We've processed through, obviously, all the new student registrations, the withdrawals. And as of today, we have 3,638 students in the district, and that's actually twenty fewer students than what we had at the end of last school year. We had 3,658. So, we have twenty less students now. We picked up students during the summer, new students, move-ins. But we have to remember that we graduated a class of 325 about, and we have a kindergarten class, I think, is 247. You know, so we're a net loss there of about 75 to 80 students. So, we've had, although we've had some new students come in, it's still not enough to make up that gap. We have two more classes at the high school, junior, senior classes, that are plus 300. And assuming, again, that our new kindergarten classes will be in that 250 range, give or take, you know, we'll have that gap again for these next couple of years. So, our enrollment at the high school will decline over the next two years as we graduate those classes of 300-plus and replace them with classes in the, you know, in the high 200s. So, again, we'd like to monitor enrollment, obviously impacts funding, and just wanted to give you that quick update. I anticipate that we're going to remain relatively level for the next couple of years. Again, graduating more than we're taking in as kindergartners, but again, new student move-ins as well. So, I, I think, over the next couple of years, again, you never know, you know, things can change quickly, but I would anticipate basically level enrollment and then starting to swing back the other way, which is, of course, what we anticipate. So, with that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Molnar.
Right. So, one question based on the two items. The first one being that today we opened up the K through five campus selection form, and that is for all the K through five parents and students to make a decision about next semester. We, in our restart plan, stated that we want parents to have the option to possibly change campuses at semester break, which is January 5th. And so, right now, the form is open for parents to consider on campus or any campus program and make any decisions, and let us know so we can plan for those changes. It's open today, but the decision's not due until midnight on November 29th, which is a Sunday. So, parents have time, or next week, or Thanksgiving break to kind of consider it and make some decisions there, and then let us know so we can plan for semester break. You can find the information on our campus selection page on our website. All right. The second thing I wanted to highlight is something we've had some conversation about already, which is Comments Live. It's an agenda item coming up here in Education Recommendations. E to authorize the board, and we're asking of authorization from you to authorize us to develop or promote a Comments Live Video Technology Program. As we discussed last week at the board work session, Doug Cogdell, our technology supervisor, and Matthew Smith, our technician, presented to you an idea, something that, again, that we kind of come to the realization of over the last few months as we recognize going into the issues with COVID, the importance of capturing and preserving our history through video. We started many months ago with trying to stream live YouTube football game. And so, realizing that, you know, how important that is, and all the comments and feedback that you receive back from students and parents and grandparents who want to, you know, watch these, relive these moments, we realize how important it is. And so, I wanted to create, give you a visual, you know, for the board, also for the community, because we want to, again, start this program. It's kind of a separate program from Students Live. And what is it really, real quick? It is a student broadcasting team that will be responsible for live streaming and capturing those moments in our history, whether it be music performances, athletic events, other academic awards ceremonies and so forth, to really capture all of those things happening in our district for generations to come, and, and provide, create a team of students to do that. It is something that is, is going to take some time to develop. I think Ron mentioned that if you're going to do it, you got to do it well. So, that's why I think we set up the fund to hopefully continue to look for grants. We've identified a few grants already that we're going to look to hopefully apply for and then hopefully get, and continue to promote this program and to develop it over the next couple of months in anticipation that we can have it ready for 2024 or 2022 next school year. So, and again, having a gut feeling that you are going to authorize us to do that. Doug has already, as we mentioned last week, he's already got the rights to commentslive.com, comments live on YouTube, Twitter, and Gmail. So, we're looking forward to starting, as we think, as you mentioned last week. It's something that we really need to do, something that came before, but we're excited about. And again, Doug and Matt both have started these, this kind of program from scratch in three separate districts. I think I remember Doug mentioned last week that, you know, the one district, he started this kind of program, I think, a dozen years ago. And I remember him making a comment that, you know, current seniors can now look back to when they were in kindergarten, first, second, third grade, and watch their events, their musical performance, et cetera. So, something that I think definitely in a town where we appreciate our history so much, unlike any other school district I've ever seen, it's about time to be starting on this. We appreciate your support, and we thank you so much for your consideration.
Any questions, Mr. Molnar?
No. He looked at me.
Why does everyone look at you?
Walter?
All right. Thank you very much. Just a couple of things. You know, we talked a lot last week about some of the things that are going on right now within student services, but I just wanted to touch on a few things. The Second Harvest pickups, we had our, our first pickup last month, some numbers from that. The team that was putting all that together was able to serve 82 families. And that would include 155 adults, 204 kids, and 18 senior citizens, which was a grand total of 377 community members were able to take advantage of the pickup food boxes. And they're still in the process of collecting RSVPs for this month. That's a big, big donation pickup for that, and so, we're looking forward to it. Also, wanted to point out, the, we are still keeping the parent information nights, the Comment Community Programs alive and well. They're just going virtual this year. So, we've been working on coming up with topics to make up some two-minute learning sessions in conjunction with our old staff, as well as Fire, Police, Counseling Recovery, and the Mental Health Board. And then, the week before last, I just wanted to give a quick shout out to Cory Engel, who is our assistant principal, as well as our principal supervisor, Mr. Powers, that even with all of the, you know, uniqueness of this current school year, she got a surprise visit from the state for a licensing visit the week before last, and did a beautiful job with all of the paperwork piece and the program, just so that everything was in line, which was, which was pretty great. So, that's what I got right now.
Any questions, Mrs. Walker? No. Just three more.
Sure, JBS. The JBS went all remote today, as a matter of fact, from that perspective. The reason they chose to do that is because they had challenges with some labs, and especially when it comes time to do some substitute learning with teachers and labs, and to maintain some of the required things that they need to do in addition to not having quite enough space to make them work in some of the larger labs. So, they will be remote through the end of November for sure, and then they will reevaluate again based on what's going on in the, in the state from that perspective. There was some pressure, I think, from other school districts to make that happen because, you know, Amherst is kind of the leader of the pack of having five-day classes from that perspective. I had a phone call this afternoon when some members in the district learned that Alon Lake is also going remote. I think they start, or want to start tomorrow or sometime this week, because they have.
Yeah, the hush, the hush.
The hush, right?
Yeah.
So, they had, I had several concerns about that when, from parents from the JBS group, or Amherst's parents, wanting to know if Amherst schools. And I said, at present time, Amherst schools has no intention of changing their on-campus process unless we're mandated by someone higher than the administration, because the administration has no power, and we know desire to do that, the, the general population. And I think that that's irritated a little bit some of the JBS parents because their kids go all remote, and they thought they were at least a little lab component. Do you recall last spring, the lab component was the big issue with graduation, hours, and all of these things? So, just to keep you apprised of that, that, you know, we may hear some wrong ones about that because from our students here in Amherst that are attending the JBS. The cookie sale is happening. So, if you need the link, Teresa has it. I sent to her immediately.
I have it.
So, it's probably almost sold out, but the, the cookie sales will be happening as far as I know. Now, that was announced before the closure of labs. But I do still think it will happen in some form or fashion, so I would follow up with you, Teresa.
Thank you.
But I'm sure you already placed your order from that perspective. Also, the Poinsettia sales, where the wreath sales and all this stuff that the greenhouse does is also, as far as I know, still happening, and it all has to be ordered online to certain extent. So, those are the things that everyone looks forward to this time of year from there. What questions do you have?
No questions.
That would conclude my report.
Thank you, Rex. Moving on to the personnel recommendations, Mr. Sayers.
Yes, Mrs. Snyder, as you can see, there's a number of personnel items, resignations, retirements, recommendation to employ substitutes, certified, classified, various leaves, stipends, a couple of memorandums. And we, of course, had an opportunity to review these. Therefore, we'd like to, at this time, recommend approval of items 11A through 11R. So moved.
Second.
Discussion, questions? Here is the roll call, please.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Yakobozzi?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
And then we'd like to recommend approval of 11S.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Yakobozzi?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder? I'm staying.
Moving on to educational recommendations.
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of comments here. Item A is a recommendation to approve our calendar for 2021, 22. And I had an opportunity to take a look at that, very similar to what we have this year. I did want to mention that we will come back in probably March, I'm guessing, with dates for open house programs, as well as parent-teacher conferences. But we do like to try to approve this in the fall if we can, the general dates for schools, so that those can be incorporated into the town planner. And I know that's something that, you know, folks around the community look to. So, I wanted to mention that there is some additional information that we will bring back as we look at next March, there abouts with some additional information. And E, of course, is the item that Mr. Molnar just spoke of, the authorization, recommendation to authorize the development and promotion of our Comments Live video program. Certainly looking forward to that. And as Mr. Molnar said, we're in the midst of pursuing a couple of funding opportunities. And hopefully, by the time we get to next summer, we will have those dollars available and ready to implement that for 2021, 22, without having to look to the general fund to support that program. So, certainly pleased to recommend approval of items 12A through 12E.
So, any questions? So, Mrs. Gillis and Mr. Zappa? Okay. Discussion?
I would just like to ask a question about the calendar. The start date is August 19th. This year, we moved that date back to a week or so, 10 days, whatever it was. Hopefully, we wouldn't have to do that, but should we think about that a little bit already? Because I think that when general populations cease to state their moment, why is it so early in the year?
Now, we went back and our thinking was that it would be easier to kind of go back to our normal calendar, if you will. Typically, that's when we start, Wednesday or Thursday of that week. And then if we had to, you know, we're still in some kind of scenario, it's a relatively easy change to push it back versus starting with that and then trying to move it.
The other way.
And move it the other way. That was the thinking. The other thing is that we try to balance up as much as possible, the instructional days between the first and second semester. We try to work it out, especially with the high schools, that they get their exams in before Christmas and finish up that first semester versus coming back for a week or two to do it that way. If you look at the way we divide the instructional days, the second semester actually has a few more instructional days, but we always try to account for testing, which of course, the testing kind of cuts in into our days. And then potentially, if we have a snow days, typically they come in the second semester as well. And that kind of balances, you know, the first and second semester that way. So that is our thinking as we develop this calendar.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call please.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mr. Yakovozzi?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
And then we'll take a motion for.
I admit.
I abstain.
Hold on.
So move, sorry, so move. Rep. Sayers?
Yep.
Okay. Roll call please.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mr. Yakovozzi?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa? Mrs. Snyder, I abstain.
I'm not used to rounding supply. So we have to deny or move or whatever.
Business recommendations.
These are over here.
Business recommendations, please, Mr. Sayers.
Yes, just a couple of comments there. Item A and D kind of go together there, and that's the recommendation to approve the agreement with the City of Amherst for the funds that will enable us to purchase a couple of school buses. And then I also wanted to mention, too, this service agreement with Republic Services. Actually, Mr. Grimmon did a nice job with this. He actually went out and he solicited another quote, and I can't remember who it was with, but then he was able to come back with Republic, which is who we're currently with, and negotiate a savings of about $222 a month per, over the three-year agreement. So it's certainly not a ton of money, but obviously a savings nonetheless, and very, very important, and it all adds up. And I just wanted to, again, commend Mr. Grimmon for just taking the time to do this and allow us to save a couple of dollars. And again, we've talked about it a lot, financial stability. It's a mindset. It's a way to go about things day in and day out. And this would be an example of that. Certainly appreciate Mr. Grimmon's work with it. We'd like to recommend approval of items 13A through 13E. So move. Oh.
Snuck it.
Discussion or questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Yakovozzi? Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Do we have need for a lengthy session? All right.
Three votes?
Yes, sure. And then.
Oh, now he's going to talk, see?
I continue to receive accolades and thank you from parents on the East-Earth Campus Program, how well it's going. I had met a lady the other night and she just was ecstatic. She says, "I can't believe how you guys do this, how well it's going." She has two children in it, and it just speaks a lot to this guy and the staff, people helping him out. Everybody was involved in getting out, and so thank you for that. That's what I wanted to say.
Okay.
And I just wanted to follow up, and I have to say, people have been so supportive. I know we've talked about it before. We've been in school, I don't know, 55 days, something like that, 60 days, give or take. And on a regular basis, we get emails from parents just expressing their support, their thanks, e-campus, on-campus. Again, everybody's situation is different. Our approach right from the get-go was to provide a choice, and I know very, our parents appreciate that very, very much. And we've just been overwhelmed by people just taking the time to send an email, call, send a text, and it's just, we very, very much appreciate it. And I'm glad you're doing that as well.
I think it would be remiss if we didn't say, said thank you out to the staff, because even though you guys made it, put the program together, the staff's implemented, and they're doing it well beyond the call of duty. And I know it's very stressful for them. They're doing things that are just, they're not used to doing, but they're doing it with a smile on their face, and it makes a difference in how the kids perceive it and how, based on the kids perceiving it, parents perceiving it the same way. But the concern, I just want to thank the teachers because they are, they are really, they're doing a great deal, but they're also under a great deal of stress and all of that. And we know that. It's not easy what they're doing. I, I wouldn't want to be a teacher today.
Yeah, it's very tough. And actually, our staff was very much involved, not only implementing it, but planning it in the summer. And we had multiple meetings at each building, where the principal working with the staff. So the staff was very collaborative process and involved in making the decisions and developing procedures in our place at each building. And you're right, it's, it's tough.
Listen, but it's not just teachers. There's the staff. The office people, these people are under a lot of stress.
Everyone's job looks different this year. Bus drivers, secretaries, cooks, teachers, principals, secretaries, everybody. Everybody is, are doing things above and beyond what they would normally do. And everyone is just pulled together to do a fabulous job. And like you said, we've just been so thankful for the comments and people just taking it one day at a time and doing the best they can, and that's all, that's all we can ask for. It's, it's going to be a very.
So I would say that we ask President to send a letter out before the break, thanking everyone from the Board of Education for everything that they have done at every level.
Before the Christmas break?
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate, absolutely. You know.
I think.
Just to. And everybody.
I think I could take it one step further and make it truly sincere, we could all sign Christmas.
Please sincere, of course it's going to be sincere.
Not just.
We can all have one center of lying, and then that's what you said. Because you're going to send an electronic.
Yes, and we could very easily, if we were able to complete it by Friday afternoon, as far as where I do a weekly update every Friday afternoon on a variety of different topics, and we could very easily incorporate it or attach it to that email, or if you wanted to wait until, say, Tuesday, we could do it, whatever the words inside are.
I think we're, we're saying right before Christmas.
I think we should do it, I think the semester's almost up.
Oh, so at Christmas? Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I thought you were referring to Thanksgiving. At Christmas, that'd be great.
And I also think that the Board should go to the City of Amherst on behalf of the Board of Education, and that may have already been on your to-do list. I'm so glad you're president.
Is there anything else you should do? Wait, let me get my external pad here to start taking instructions.
That's why I just think that those are two things that are important that we do acknowledge from the Board of Education.
The President's only coach is the Board. The President's only coach is the Board.
That's right.
Exactly.
Now, if Teresa was in there.
I was just saying, you and all, so.
Anybody have anything else they'd like to comment on?
Mark, do you have anything to say?
No.
Wow. You're loud.
Thank you, everyone.
It's all good.
Next month, all right?
I got you a walk-in drawer tonight, didn't I?
Took all day.
I didn't have your act, did I?
Okay, if nobody else has anything else, I'll take the motion to adjourn.
So move. Thank you.
Yeah, roll call.
Yes, Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mr. Yakovozzi?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.